Okay. Spars crowd.
Are we the Three Amigos tonight? Is that the way it is?
This is the Three Amigos.
Okay, it's just past 7:30. Let's call the July 11th, 2013 meeting of the situat planning board to order. We have an agenda. Does anybody have any suggestion changes to the agenda?
None. No.
Okay. If we don't have any, you need a motion?
I would move that we accept the agenda.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First item on the list today is the site, request for a site plan waiver to convert the second floor of the William Ravis office building on 159/165 Front Street from an apartment to an office. I guess the applicant is here?
Correct.
Correct? Maybe we can ask you to come forward to the table. Introduce yourself.
Okay.
And tell us what you want to try to accomplish here.
Okay. My name is David Friend. I'm here to represent the company, William Ravis. I'm the manager of the current office there. I guess the issue is that we had purchased the building in November of last year to take over the upstairs space. And what we're trying to do is just open up the space upstairs and have access so that current employees can go upstairs and also have meeting space on the second floor. So, we submitted a building request and, you know, and that was turned down, I guess, because we need a site plan waiver. So, I'm here today to get the waiver, I hope.
Okay.
And also, a couple of things that were missing, I think, were some of the architectural drawings for the second floor as well, so I have copies for you as well.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. I may have gone a little out of order here, but if anyone's, is anyone here for this piece of the hearing? I should explain it anyway, that this is an application for a site plan waiver. Under the town assituate zoning bylaw, section 770.2A. And under that bylaw, the planning board needs to make a determination that the application is minor in nature and that we can waive the requirements of a site plan review. So...
I can speak to that if you want.
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, we're not adding employees. It's basically the current staff that's on-site. We're just looking to use the upstairs space as well as the downstairs space.
Okay. Laura?
It's a pretty, you know, straightforward application. The idea is to convert a two-bedroom apartment to office space. There are a couple of issues, one of which I know Mr. Friend knows about, which is that the building department wants to make sure that they don't need something serious in the way of handicap access to the second floor and also to look at fire protection under the building code. Because when you have an apartment, there isn't a lot of oversight with those types of things, you know, other than having a smoke detector. But when you start having more people in an office, I think there's a presumption that an office is open to the public unless you post signs and you have a door. I mean, if you do something to really separate it, you may be able to convince him that it's not public space, but that's something I think you would need to take up with him. So, anyhow, all those things, you don't have to get into tonight, but I'm just mentioning them because they might make this whole process a little more involved for the applicant. The only thing that I think really comes up with the planning board is that it's a little bit tight on this site as far as parking. And because the use on that second floor is changing from an apartment to an office, there's a change in the parking demand. And it's not a big change, but it's not a big site, and yet, there's a lot going on on this site. There's a single-family house. There's Little House of Arts that some people know from their kids. And then there's Paul Cuxte's sign shop is there, which is considered retail. And I took some pictures down there, which I think I forwarded to you all. I can't make color copies now because that machine is kind of blocked off, but if anyone has those pictures, it's, every space was filled and then the space closest to Ravis had like a car stacked behind another car. And then there's another area that they've converted into parking, which used to be kind of a lawn area, but now it's parking. But there's no curb cut there. It's a little difficult for...
The old jewelry building there that...
Correct.
Yeah. So, it's tricky there for parking, and the traffic rules talked about it last night at their meeting. And they had some concerns about it, that, you know, even though it is a small site, that it's really kind of hard to maneuver there. There are a lot of vehicles for a lot of different purposes coming and going, and whether, you know, really, it's a good thing to add more traffic there. So, there's some alternatives. I mean, the applicant, I think, you know, I'm not sure if we talked about these or not, but there might be some possibility that they could lease a space from the dentist next door or... Oh, did you get the pictures on?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Okay. They might be able to lease a space from the dentist. I mean, I think the problem is that it's hard to make the argument that these uses are having their peak hours at different times, because you look at it and it's just, you know, kind of overflowing with cars. So, I don't know, maybe the applicant has some ideas about, you know, what they might want to do.
I do have copies of the parking for the site. I highlighted our parking space. You got that? Do you have enough of those?
We can share.
Just the point, and I know you talked about timing. We have about 19 or so employees there, but they're very transient in nature in real estate. It comes and goes. Nobody sits at their desk. And part of the issue is it's not a very private office, so you can't stay there very long and have any private calls with your clients. So, another reason why we need the second floor. But to talk about parking, we have one meeting a week that the group gets together. That's Tuesday morning at 9:30. So, that's when we tend to swell up a little bit in our parking, and that may have been the picture you have there. What they do is park in that time in the morning. Typically, there's street parking in front of TK's is available, or Cole Parkway, or otherwise. So, typically, we're pretty good to get through it. But I would say, yes, it gets a little crowded. But regarding the second floor, we're not adding people. We're not going beyond this. It's not like we're staffing up to take more space. We're just keeping the current space, or staff, that is. So, but the piece that's to the left in that drawing, I don't know if you mentioned it, it's an asphalt area, which is what the tenant upstairs used to use on the left of the building. If you're looking from Front Street at the building, there's roughly two spots there that are kind of common space for the area, which we use. It was the tenant's space prior. So...
You're talking about right in front of the building?
To the left.
To the left.
There's an asphalt, kind of a...
Looking from Front Street.
Looking from Front Street, the left of the building.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, is it this spot?
Yeah.
It's this spot right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that tends to be our kind of overflow, but again, if it's full, and we basically talked to the team, it's, if clients do come to the office, we need to leave space for them. So, we, get your car in, get what you need done, and get out. That's how it works.
So, can you walk us through, I mean, you have highlighted, it looks like, four slots here. Are those all your designated parking spots?
Correct. Per the condominium documents, correct. Number two, number three, number four, and number five.
Okay. And that was based on the use of the building as first-floor office and the second-floor residence?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, in terms of going to two-floor, full floors, office, does that change the parking requirement a bit?
Yeah, because I think it's 1,074, so for every 300 square feet of floor space, one parking space is required. So, that really, you know, technically, it's four, but, you know, I suppose you could round it down to three, but, yeah, so...
So, we're sort of one space short here.
Yeah, I think you're one space short. You know, I think the only thing that really makes me a little concerned is when you look at how cars are having to be stacked and, you know, how do people really get in and get out of there? I think you'd kind of want a site plan if more lawn space were going to be converted to parking. I mean, that is already what happened on that left-hand side that didn't used to be...
No, there's no lawn there.
Well, behind, there's plenty of lawn. I don't know, it's part of your use area, or maybe it's a separate, like, use area, you know? But around Cuxte's building, there's lawn.
Correct. You bet.
Yeah, so...
Well, that's not an official parking spot.
Oh, okay, all right.
Is that right?
So, I mean, I guess another thing you could do is maybe just agree that that's going to be an official parking spot.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
The problem is that, you know, to get in and out of there is very difficult. So...
You're talking about...
This one here?
Yeah, the spot where that car's parked there on the side there, and that looks to me to be part of the driveway.
That's...
Well, there's curb, there's curb all around it, so you can't get there from Front Street. You have to get there from the side street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you gotta come up here and get in here.
I should know that, because I'm right across the street. Without telegraphing what my thoughts are, very much, if we denied the waiver and we required a formal site plan, what additional information are we going to get?
Well, you might be giving the applicant, you know, if you make it clear to him that this is what you're interested in, you know, giving him some time to really get the parking organized.
I mean...
I mean, I don't think you need the site plan to do that. I think you can just tell him, you know, that you'd like him to look at the parking, or you can decide that it's not really significant.
From my perspective, you know, if all we're going to do is put a conference room up there, you know, I'm, I have much less of a problem. If we're going to eventually put, you know, 57 new offices up there, then that becomes a huge issue. But if all we're going to do is have a place for the existing people to meet with, their existing clients, in a quiet spot, you know, that's much less of an issue. I don't know at this point how we...
Well, there'd be nothing to prevent.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. I don't know how we, I don't know how we put that in iron and say, you know, thou shall not put office space up there, and you can only have conference rooms.
Sure.
Well, I think you can make that a condition of your approval if you want to.
That would make me happy, you know, because we're not really increasing the use of the site or the, you know, the pressure, if you will. We're just making, you know, what's not a lot different than storage space.
Sign when they close and everything. Yeah. How many people are there full-time, for lack of, yeah?
About 19 or 20. But again, you know, we have the, there's probably 12 that are very active every week, and there's few that are kind of more remote than that.
Yeah, no, 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 and that's what I'm wondering, like, who's there to, you know, open the door, turn on the coffee pot in the morning, that kind of...
We have an office operations manager, Krista Sandra.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so she's there quite often.
Okay.
And then typically, there's one or two people in and out.
Rotating in and out, yeah.
And it's rotating.
Yeah.
And again, Tuesdays, we do have, you know, the challenge of parking, but we can work and prove that, you know?
Yeah, this was a Tuesday afternoon. It was about 4 o'clock.
Maybe they stayed late.
Oh, okay. They're working really hard.
Anything else, Bob?
No, other than, yeah, I mean, I understand completely, you know, upstairs, conference room, quiet spot. I've been in enough realty offices to know that, you know, you need your spot to sign all the paperwork and everything. So, if upstairs is just going to be conference room, I don't foresee any problems. The parking is a concern only because I've been in there with the art place up back for the kids and stuff, so...
And just to talk, speak to that, in fact, that's very weekend-driven.
True.
We are not there in the weekend. So, it actually works out quite well. In fact, the wood carving has his events in the evening, so we're not even there then. So, it's actually a perfect marriage of the businesses that are there together at this point, so...
Have we received any input from the Butters, from Cuxte's and from the Art?
No, typically, with a site plan waiver, Butters aren't notified.
I tend to agree with Eric that the, if the use is just the existing staff using that space as conference rooms, then that could probably work out. The real question becomes whether that's what you want as a permanent condition on this, because I think I would be inclined to say that would be a condition. This is just my thought, anyway. This would be a condition, so if it were to be, the building were to be sold or whatever else, this condition would still stay with the building, and somebody would have to modify that and come back in and ask for approval, or if you decided in the future you wanted to convert it to offices. The alternative is, you know, you could spend some time and try to find an additional parking that might sort of address the parking issue at this point. So, that seems to me to be the...
I think in the short term, we just need to clean up the upstairs and have access to it, you know? And I think that we, the drawings I have here that would show the floor plan are essentially just conference rooms for expanded space of the current team. So, I think that that's probably a fair resolution, and then if we need to change it at some point, if we have growth, then we have to talk about expanding the space.
And Laura, we can, we could put a condition on the site plan waiver?
Yeah.
With that?
Yeah.
And that will ultimately, if somebody else buys the building, they would still have to come back here?
Yeah.
Would it be best to limit the use upstairs to conference room space? And then I'm wondering if we ought to consider the idea of capping the number of employees that could work there? Because that's the real issue, I think, is, you know, the number of bodies that work in that space and the cars they bring.
Right, but, well, I guess I don't know if that, this is just sort of my view, but I don't know if you capped it at 20 or 22 or whatever. It would make a material difference since they only have four spots.
No, I understand.
And they'd still have to take business parking.
And the next issue is whether or not you're going to cap, you know, part-time employees, you know, they tend to share desks a lot and all those kinds of things. I know some people that work there, they'd get mad at me if I did that.
Any other questions? Is there anybody from the public who has any comments? Okay.
Okay, I almost got a motion here if you, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to suggest we fashion a motion.
Okay, I've got a draft if you want to...
Am I the official reader of motions? Richard is not back yet, obviously. Okay, I move that we approve a site plan waiver for conversion of the second floor at 159-165 Front Street from an apartment to office space with the following conditions. The upstairs, the use of the upstairs shall be limited to conference room rather than individual office space. Any changes to the upstairs shall require approval of the planning board.
Any further changes?
Any further changes.
Okay, okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
Can I ask a question? Just because I'm thinking of the space that's set up. If there's a room, that's a closet that's converted to a resource room with a chair, is that considered an office?
No.
What would be, okay, so I just want to break the rules as soon as I walk out of here.
First of all, tell me what a resource room is.
Where the printer is, and there's a laptop there. You know, we have, what we need is utility space for people to do, to conduct their business, so there'll be chairs in various rooms, and they're working within the confines of the space we have. We're not building walls or anything like that. But I just want to make sure I'm not pushing our boundaries. It is planned for conference room, but there's a closet that's four by eight that we plan on using with a printer and a copier, and, you know, that sort of, fax.
My proviso would be, don't tempt fate.
I know, I know.
And don't ever snatch victory from, defeat from jaws of victory.
Correct, correct.
Don't do that.
I'm out the door. Yeah, thank you very much, gentlemen.
I think we still need some vote.
Yes. We have a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Here you go.
How we doing for time? We're a little late on time?
A little long.
Oh, he is on the way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can we take the stormwater permit at 61 Border Street out of water? Are the people here for that?
Anybody here for that? Yeah, that would be, that would be fine. Why don't we do that? Okay, so this is the discussion on the request for a stormwater permit for construction at 61 Border Street. If I can ask you all to identify yourselves, and we'll give you the floor.
Sure. Kevin Grady, Gray Sullivan, representing the applicants. I did the site plan on this. This is Kristen Lilly and Michael Kenny, the applicants.
Could I stop you for just one minute, so I make sure the public knows the process here?
Absolutely.
This is...
Sorry.
This is an application made under the town assituate stormwater bylaws. Because there were areas where the slope exceeded 15%, that would be altered, review and approval of the planning board is required. So, that's the reason for the hearing today. Approval is by a majority of the planning board. Please proceed.
As you stated, we're here before you because part of your bylaw requires that we file a stormwater application for work on a lot that has slopes greater than 15%. We didn't meet any other thresholds. Fairly small area we're proposing to alter, I think it's 17,000 square feet, plus or minus. We reviewed the bylaw, and in general terms, we need to show that we're not increasing peak rate of flow off of the site, or increasing the volume of flow off of the site from the pre-condition to the post-condition. This lot is sloped. It's somewhat poorly drained over in this area of town, so it took a little bit of work to meet the pretty high standards that you, you know, have for stormwater. You know, the state regulations wouldn't be required on a single-family lot, and they also don't require that we reduce the volume of runoff. Again, we did a pretty comprehensive analysis of this. We submitted it to the town. Amory Engineers also reviewed it, had a couple of comments that we addressed. I'll run through the layout of the stormwater design now. Basically, the site slopes from Border Street down to the river, a couple hundred feet away. The stormwater system consists of four different components or systems. The system number one is a subsurface system that attenuates the stormwater from the front half of the roof. That stormwater system is...
Is there something you could point out to us, just so we make sure we're looking at the same thing here?
On the board?
If you could just hold it up there if it's helpful.
There's an easel.
Yeah, I brought an easel on board. I can post it.
Yeah. This is the front half here. So, this is the beaching area.
I've been blocking this for some. Everybody see this okay? But again, the general slopes from Border Street down to Gulf River here, quite a ways down here. Four systems. The front sys, the system number one is located in the front here. It manages the stormwater for the front half of the roof. The system is comprised of two feet of inch and a half to three-quarter inch crushed stone. It's a subsurface infiltration system. So, the roof drains are routed right into the system through the downspouts. It also attenuates the runoff from the driveway. The driveway slopes to an inlet located here, the low point. It runs through this inlet, which is 74 Bay, the secondary sediment in War Bay, to meet the TSS removal from this impervious surface prior to discharge to the subsurface system. So, we have a low point right here that the water is routed to. The emergency overflow is actually the downspouts. The downspout inlet says T, so if the system surcharges, it comes out through there and then runs overland. System number two is located in the rear, is also a subsurface system. That attenuates the rear half of this roof. Again, connected from the downspouts over to the subsurface system, consists of two 12-inch ADS pipes surrounded by three-quarter inch stone, with some volume there and some stone surface for infiltration. These two other systems are infiltration basins. There's an area through here that water runs off of. My initial analysis, I was hoping that this system and this system would be enough to take this driveway runoff and this roof runoff and meet your regulations for both runoff and peak rate. Because we're going from woods, basically, to grass, it didn't quite make that analysis. So, now I have to deal with this area here. Again, we're on a slope, so I can't really meet a large single basin. I need to step that up. So, I wound up having a series of infiltration basins. A small one here, I'm calling system four, small one here, system three. So, we have overland runoff that goes into this one, infiltrates, overflows into this one, and infiltrates as well. They attenuate the 100-year storm and, again, don't increase runoff or volume. And that's basically the stormwater system.
Great. Laura?
Couple of comments. Amory looked over this plan, and some changes were made, and they were satisfied with it. The property is not a very big buildable area, and there's a lot that has to be fit in, and it's, you know, it's a somewhat tight lot. You can see that there's some ledge. There's a special type of septic system, which is going to, you know, disperse in soil that has ledge in it. And one of the things that Amory did was they changed the drainage system. They asked the drainage system, you know, be changed around because they needed a greater setback from the septic reserve to the drainage. So, that was taken care of. And I think otherwise, we looked at the swale on the east side of the property, kind of where the corner comes down, off the corner, off the back corner of the house on the east side, and the swale now looked like it was going to, you know, really discharge a little too much off onto the abutting property. So, I think Grady Consulting has agreed that they will change those swales around. We did a drawing, gave, I did a drawing, gave it to them, and they seem to think that it would work all right.
Can you speak to that for one sec, Laura?
Sure.
Yeah, we have no problem doing that. I can even do a little bit of a burn on the backside of this. I started working on that, and I was going to send it to you, and we have power issues at the office. That is, everything just kinda stopped. Or I would've had that to you. I couldn't even print. But I think we can actually, you know, make these swales pretty much like you showed them and then even bring it back and do a little bit of a burn, you know, a half-foot high, just to make that, you know, turn that... Turn that corner a little more clear. In this room, I can just adjust those contours. I'll finish that up and if I have power tomorrow, I'll send it right over to you.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. And I was gonna ask you, with the roof runoff and system number one in particular, is there somewhere on the plan where you describe that you were talking about 12-inch pipe and three-quarter inch stone and so on? Is that in one of the notes? Because on the first page, it's a little bit vague.
You don't really see the...
What those, what the construction detail is?
Sheet three or four.
Okay.
It's off left corner would be driveway. Roof drain, system number one.
Maybe you could put a note on this first page, which is, you know, what people see that, you know, when they, you know, just take a look at this thing. On system one, you know, see detail on page three or something like that, just to kind of tie it together for people.
Sure.
And you said this driveway is gonna be crushed stone or it's not gonna be crushed stone?
We analyzed it as pavement.
As pavement?
I'm not sure if they've decided on a surface yet, but pavement creates some runoff and we were able to analyze that. So if they wanna step back to something, they might infiltrate more. The drainage analysis would accommodate that.
Again, we have spent quite a bit of time looking at this plan and working with it. I think what they've got is pretty good, given the limitations of the site, which are pretty restrictive. If you wanted to, you could always ask that, you know, maybe there'd be some review after a couple of years to make sure everything is working properly. But at the same time, there is an operation and maintenance plan and we are always kind of improving our way of approaching stormwater because it's such a big issue around town. We had a different project this week that I think between Karen and I, we must've spent half the week just working on this one project. Lot of abutter concern and just a very tough situation. So I think we're all sensitive to trying not to affect abutting properties and trying to make the homeowner's responsibilities really clear and make sure these things are built right. So we spent a lot of time on the conditions and that's one of the reasons why the conditions for these things are as involved as they are. But, you know, I think we're in a pretty good place with this. The only thing I'm thinking is that, given how tight this site is and how much it has to get packed in here, that it might not be a bad idea to have some type of review and, you know, in a couple of years, just to make sure everything is working properly.
I have a question on that. As a gardener and someone who's very interested in landscaping, the house I'm at now was on the garden tour. I mean, this is something that is not a minor hobby for me. That if I want to be spending a lot of time, energy, and money in a very nice landscaped yard and then there's going to be review in a number of years where I'm gonna have to tear everything up, I would kind of like to know how that affects what I'm going to do with my landscaping. I mean, does a review require that you're gonna do some more sloping and tear up my yard? The expense, all of that? I just, that's a concern that immediately flagged to me that I'm going to be doing work on my yard.
I understand your question. I don't think the review will tear anything up. The review is to review how the stormwater system is performing. And so the results of the review may identify a need for modifications. That's what the review will do. It's pretty hard to project right now what that might be. Hopefully, it won't be anything. Hopefully, the systems will be performing just as well as intended.
I guess what it is, is that certain guidelines are in place right now and there are certain guidelines that are there that we meet and we follow. And now it sounds like that I'm going to be subjected to, now that I'm a homeowner and this is how things were then, that something changes a lot, that, you know, a lot of times people are grandfathered or whatever, you know, as is my neighbor doesn't have a stormwater management plan and go in and do things to their property. So I'm just wondering, that seems a little harsh.
I don't think it would have any effect on the landscaping. I mean, the one thing that I can think of that would be kind of a quick fix might be that it might be important to look at the driveway and, you know, maybe a crushed stone driveway would infiltrate more, you know, I mean, it would infiltrate more than a paved driveway. I mean, that I think would be like a quick change, but it definitely wouldn't be anything like to, you know, deliberately cause harm to your property. I mean, nobody would wanna do that.
Well, tearing up a tar driveway that you've put, they're not cheap.
To address your question, though.
Yeah.
You know, we understand the concern and the apparent inequity or inequity between, you know, those that are grandfathered and those that are not and those sorts of things. But really, what we're asking you to do is we're asking for you to take the risk that this is gonna work as opposed to your neighbors. You know, at this point, we're trying to look carefully into our crystal balls and see how things are gonna be in a year or two and we just don't know. And so what we're saying is we're willing to take a modest risk, but we think that because you're the one that's come forward, you're the one that's ultimately gonna benefit from this, the risk rightly should be allocated to you. And so what we really wanna do is we wanna come back in a couple of years and just see how things are working. If they're working fine and we've accurately predicted what the future's gonna be, no problem. But if there are problems, then the person who should bear the risk of those problems is you and not your neighbors. Because you're the one that's trying to change the things as they exist now. And I think it's just a question of fairness. You know, we're, you know, this board, at least speaking for myself as a member of the board, has always been very focused on, we want to encourage landowners to do all that they can with their property to improve it as best they can. And we're trying to be fair as best we can. And this is really just a question of, you know, allocating the risk in a way that's predictable and foreseeable and it's fair to everybody. Yes, sir?
I think we'd like to see the language. You know, we're talking about language where you're, you know, potentially imposing something upon her that she's agreeing to, she doesn't know what it is. Typically, what happens here is we have an operation maintenance plan and schedule. I think what you're asking her to do is implement that and you wanna check on it in a few years, basically. Yeah, if this absolutely doesn't work, sure, you're gonna want something there as well, but we need language to say that, not just, you know, we're gonna hold you to something someday. It's a little scary for somebody who's doing a large investment and is meeting your regulations.
That's not unreasonable.
Yeah.
I was, at first, I do a lot of construction and development up in Concord, Carolina. Also been fortunate enough to design and construct some pretty interesting, large wastewater treatment systems down in the Cape. And, you know, at first, I thought to myself, why the concept of the peer review? And then when you really think it through, you know, you have two very talented engineers who've looked at the situation and I would expect that, you know, with proper maintenance, it's gonna perform as it should. In reference to the site, in terms of being tight, there was a plan, and this is one of these situations where we entered into contract upon the representation that there was an approved septic plan, approved town permits. And in effect, there was a septic plan that may or may not have been recorded as approved and not much else. So the first septic plan was pretty frightening. It had a rear wall that was elevated eight to 10 feet all the way around. And I didn't know what kind of process it went through. It never, it never really was a point of consideration for us. So we really spent a lot of time and effort to make sure, number one, that we're gonna design a great-looking home. Number two, I'm thrilled with the perk right system. I work with it all the time. Gives you great flexibility. It's very innovative, far past, you know, what's going on in the Title V sense. So I think we've really achieved, I think, a pretty interesting plan that's gonna address these issues.
Well, we look forward to having you come back in a few years and brag about how well your plans worked.
There you go.
Exactly.
It's like when you build a wastewater treatment plant next to Gifford Pond down in Thomas, you know? Somebody said, "This better work," and I said, "Don't worry." Yeah, but I just know what you're saying.
Our understanding is that plan was at least approved in Board of Health and probably predated your stormwater bylaw, which is fairly new. And I think its point is this is a significant improvement upon what was going on there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Oh, you've made your comments. Do you have any more comments?
No.
No, I'm satisfied.
My only question for you, well, two questions. It sounds like Amory is...
Yeah, they're reconciled at this point.
Okay. My only question is, I didn't quite understand how the driveway gets into the subsurface?
Sure.
How does that happen?
Sheet, check the detail sheet three or four. One is the driveway roof drain system, so that's how the roof runoff gets in there.
I was really thinking of the driveway.
Yep, the sediment four bay detail.
Oh, I see. There's a whole, like, interceptor or something?
Yeah, catch basin.
I got it. It just wasn't on the front. Wasn't immediately on there, so.
Catch basin inlet at the low point.
Yep. Okay. I think that's... Those cover my question. I think we've covered it fairly here. Are there any questions from the public? Yes?
Joseph Dunleavy, 53 Border Street. They still gonna have a review or not?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna have a review or not? In a year or two?
Oh, well, we'll get to that, but I'm assuming you're supporting that? By your comment?
Michelle Dunleavy, 8th House, 53 Border Street, the parking lot. I just wanna, I'm okay with it, but I would like it reviewed.
Okay.
Just in case there's any problems coming along.
And are you, are you in a butter?
I'm the owner of the property, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anything else? Great. Okay. In terms of our discussion?
I think, first of all, you know, the engineering work to my unarticulated eye looks excellent. And I expect that this is gonna work like advertised and it's gonna work well. And I expect to see that. So I, you know, I think we should have a review just for the purpose of making sure that everybody's comfortable. I don't foresee any problems. I would expect none. And, you know, I think the design professionals will stand behind their work and it'll get done the way it's supposed to get done the first time.
I agree. I'm excited and impressed with the work that was done here to deal with the stormwater runoff. It's, you know, it's all gonna be down, out of the way, but still working. And you can have your gardens and your flowers. I live with a gardener as well, so I understand the importance of that. So no, I have no doubt that things will work as designed and function properly.
Great. Well, I too have to say that I think you've done a, particularly looking at the previous plan, you've done a significant improvement here. It does look complex, given that you've had to put these individual step-down infiltration basins in. And I would support having a review of the system. And I think that review, it would seem to me, a couple of years.
Yeah, and just to make it clear, we find that a lot of times, these plans get approved and people have the best of intentions, but, you know, life kind of gets away from you sometimes and you don't do the maintenance. You know, it's like your car, you know? There are some people that do the 5,000-mile checkup every 5,000 miles religiously and then, you know, there's the rest of us. So what I just wanna do is to kind of have that as just a kind of meeting-type of arrangement where I think it would be a motivator to keep on top of all that stuff. You know, if you know there's gonna be some, you know, later meeting and just, you know, make sure that all the inspection reports are done and everything is functioning the way it's supposed to. All I had in mind. I certainly didn't have any redesign of the system or anything like that.
Right.
And again, going through the rigors of constructing a wastewater treatment plan, aware of these and resolving those issues. And, you know, if the concept is you're gonna come back in two years and just revisit it and see if things are performing correctly.
And I would suppose that, you know, we could either administratively waive the review if everybody says things are fine.
Sure. It sounds like we're getting close to where we need a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, yeah, we have a motion.
Oh, we've got an motion either.
Oh, we can hand it down to Richard. He's here. He does a much better job than I do.
Okay, but he might... Do you wanna do it or do you want...
Sure.
I'll let Richard read that one. I feel relieved. Atlas has shrugged.
Okay. I move to approve the stormwater permit for 61 Border Street as it meets the objectives of the Town of Situate stormwater bylaw and stormwater regulations with the following conditions. Number one, construction shall comply with the stormwater permit, application and design calculations, and the site plan number 61, Border Street, Situate, Massachusetts, sheets one through four, all dated 5/24/13, with revisions through 6/28/13, prepared by Grady Consulting, LLC, Kingston, Massachusetts, except as may be modified to conform to the conditions below. Number two, the applicant shall meet all of the requirements of the Building Department, the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, DPW, Fire Department, and other town agencies, as well as all state and federal regulations. Number three, prior to obtaining a foundation permit and any land disturbance, a new grading plan shall be submitted to show that the swale from the driveway to the back of the house will be regarded to keep water on-site.
Regraded, I believe?
Yeah, I think it must be regraded, I'm sorry. It does say regarded, but... Regraded to keep water on-site. Additional spot grades from Border Street up the driveway to the house shall be added. The site shall be staked to show the house, driveway, and drainage improvements shown on the plan. The town planner shall be notified 48 hours in advance so an inspection can occur. Condition number four, in order to ensure proper, long-term maintenance of the stormwater management system, a copy of the operations and maintenance plan for the stormwater management system will be provided to the first owner of the home. If the property is under agreement, the developer shall provide the planning board a copy of a contract with an engineering firm for a minimum of an hour meeting with the future homeowner for the purpose of explaining the function of the system and reviewing required maintenance for the driveway. This meeting shall occur within 30 days of the approval of this permit and prior to the issuance of a building permit. A single-family homeowner's agreement regarding operation and maintenance of a stormwater management system shall be provided to the planning board within 40 days of the approval of this permit and prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number five, a crushed stone construction entrance shall be required and installed prior to any further work on the site. It shall be a minimum of 50 foot long by 12 feet wide and 12 inches deep. It shall be maintained throughout the construction to prevent sediment from reaching the road. Additional erosion control, such as a silt fence and/or hay bales placed prior to a precipitation event, may be needed to prevent sediment from reaching the road, adjacent properties, or wetland resources during construction. Number six, no on-street parking shall... Number six, no on-street parking shall be permitted during construction. Number seven, if blasting is required, debris from blasting will be removed from the site at the end of each day. Number eight, a pre-construction conference will be required, including the site contractor, the blasting contractor, and a representative of the fire department if blasting is required, the director of public health, the town planner, and the conservation agent. Number nine, construction inspections will be provided as follows. All inspections for the town shall be performed by the town planner. All inspections shall be documented with written reports that describe compliance with the approved plans and supporting application documents and construction specifications. Any variation shall be noted. The town planner will be notified 48 hours prior to staking, installation of the drainage system, and the finished grading for purposes of inspecting the work. The town planner shall be notified upon completion for an inspection to determine compliance with the conditions prior to issuing a certificate of completion, COC, indicating that the project has been completed in compliance with the conditions set forth in the stormwater permit and bylaw. Condition number 10, any planned changes or changes from the proposed materials shall be submitted to the planning board to determine if the changes are insignificant or require or permit modifications through the planning board. The stormwater management system shall... approved shall not be changed without the prior written approval of the issuing authority. Number 11, as-built plans stamped by a registered surveyor and registered professional engineer who designed the stormwater system shall be submitted to the planning board within 30 days of completion of the work. The plan shall include the construction conditions of the stormwater management system, grading, house, and driveway. The as-built plan must be submitted prior to obtaining a certificate of completion and certificate of occupancy. 12, the stormwater permit and the operation and maintenance plan shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. And finally, 13, as noted in the single-family homeowner's agreement, prior to the transfer of the property, the owner shall provide to the subsequent owner and the planning board an inspection report certified by a professional engineer as described above, showing compliance with the operation and maintenance plan.
Now, there's a number 14 that I think Bob has from this meeting that we were talking about.
I can read this. 14, "The planning board may exercise the option to request a review of the function of the system within two years of the approval..." I'm sorry, two years...
Yeah, I think it's a...
...of the approval of this permit.
Could I ask a question before we move further?
Discussion.
Yes. Looking at number five. Second, last full sentence, and talks here about the fact that, you know, additional items such as erosion control and silt fence and hay bales and so forth may be required. Who decides?
I think some of that is shown on the plan.
Yeah, we've surrounded the entire property in silt sock, and we also showed a construction entrance on the...
I remember seeing that, but my question is, is if we require additional of whatever this stuff is...
I was just gonna get to that.
Okay.
I would think the... typically what happens is the site contractor does some work, and he wants to hold that together, and he wants to retain it.
Okay.
They're the ones who typically do it.
So the contractor and owner are gonna assume the risk of that?
They are.
Okay, that's fine.
We've surrounded the property for the abutters, and then these individual small areas, they wanna stabilize them, and they... in the event we're gonna get storms, they should take the precautions. I think we're protected via abutters, basically.
That's a standard condition we have because, you know, different plans have different amounts of erosion control.
I just was wondering what the purpose of that is. If all we're doing is putting you on notice that you may have to do more of that, that's just fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Motion?
We have a second. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
If one of those has that number 14, so...
I do, yeah. I have the number 14.
There, let's give that back to Laura.
Make that official.
She's got it?
Thanks.
Yeah, leaving the car and taking the train.
I know.
A little on the...
We'll get that next.
I'll try to myself.
It would've worked if he had had the key with him.
Those are parentheticals, and I use those a lot when I speak. And a number of years ago, I was involved in depositions that required translation into Cantonese. Just drove the...
What did I miss so far? Did we do the site plan waiver?
We did. It was a...
It's the old frigide buildings.
It changed everything in front of them.
Yeah, I thought those were all details.
Nature of the real estate business where, you know, it's not like anyone has a desk or an office. They come in, they might do what they have to print, just print that, and then they're out to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you wanted a place upstairs, you know, pass papers.
Okay.
Everything. Whatever. So we just...
We're moving on to a discussion on the request for an endorsement of an approval-not-required plan for the property at Summer Street and Clapp Road. Maybe I could ask, I think you're the representative here, Paul, so...
Our witness is, is there's three children. Their parents have died. They're in charge of the state. It's up on the corner of Clapp Road and Summer Street. I was just doing the whole of Otis. That's always the most itchy's corner. Their father was itchy, and three children.
Oh, their father was itchy, huh?
Their father was itchy, yes.
I always wondered who the itchy was. I used to drive past that corner all the time.
These are the two sons, and the daughter is Rochelle Saunders, Mr. Mary Daniels, and she's the executive of the state. What they're doing is, we go into the Conservation Commission to get a house permitted. And we're asking to have this lot approved, also managed and maintained. Here, they're nothing going on on its sets. They're also going to... They're familiar to Smalls. They've been friends for years. The Smalls have their driveway and their property. They didn't realize that until we surveyed the property. So the state is going to give them this parcel of the driveway and save us a house.
Okay.
This is the one who's just talking about the driveways.
Is that everything?
That's it. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
So if I understand it correctly, then... I apologize.
Well, I thought maybe we could...
What do you wanna do?
Throw it to Laura here first?
Okay, thanks. So, yeah, everything about this situation sounds very easy to understand. There's a human backstory about, you know, parents that passed away and so on. And I think everybody would want to divide this property and to really, you know, make everything easy and simple. But with a lot of land that's out there that's still to be developed, it's still to be developed because there are some issues with it. And with this property, I think the main issue is the wetlands and the location of the wetlands. When you think about a Form A plan, there are really two things that planning boards have to look at. And one is the frontage. Is there, you know, sufficient frontage? Is it on a public way? Is it the right, you know, the right kind of frontage, the right length of frontage to qualify? And this certainly has that. It's got the frontage. It's on Summer Street, public way, no problem. The second thing that the board has to look at is, is there access to what could be considered a buildable part of the lots? And I think that's where this plan starts to run into some problems. Because when you look at the upland that's in the front area of these lots and you look at where the building setback is, you can see that there's extremely little space there, and there's really not enough space for a house to go. When you look at the back portion of the lot, the question is, could you get there with a Conservation Commission approval? And the Saunders, is that the name? Mrs. Saunders, her...
Yeah, the front one?
Rochelle Saunders.
Back several years ago, she did apply to the Conservation Commission for a driveway going over... It was up in this area here, and there was some wetland that was gonna have to be replicated in a different location. And the Conservation Commission said, "Well, you know, we can't really approve this. You need to give us another plan." And I think that's where things stood.
Which they have. You know, the purpose of this plan is for the division of land and under the subdivision control law, in your rules and regulations, there's two things we look at. Does it meet the test that is it a subdivision or is it a division of land? It's clearly a division of land, and under the subdivision of the fill statute, it's very clear that if it's a division of land, the planning board has to sign the plan, number one. Number two, your regulations also say that if you have wetlands, you require the applicant to go to the Conservation Commission and have the wetlands confirmed. So we can show that we have the required upland for each individual lot that is gonna have a house on it, which is Lot 7, and we have done that. This clearly has a upland as well. There's 91,000 square feet of upland, and you require a full acre. I'm sorry, 40,000 square feet. You got 44,000 square feet here. Conservation would not allow us to fill this wetland in, so we're going around it, and we're going down it here, and we... and they have that plan, and the order of conditions so stated.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said?
I said, "We have conservation approval to build a house on this lot coming off of this frontage here."
Lot 7?
Lot 7, yes.
Where is that approval?
Pardon?
Where is that approval?
It's in order of conditions from the Conservation Commission.
Do we have it?
Well, we looked all through the Conservation Commission files and... Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe you have it.
We have it, and we had to appeal it, and we went back, and what we did was, rather than go to Superior Court, the owner went back and they worked out... we worked out a plan where we did not have to fill any wetlands. And the order of conditions said that submit a plan showing that you aren't gonna fill the wetland here, and we did that. So we met those order of conditions. But as far as the A and R plan, all you require is that the wetlands have been confirmed by the commission, and we did that. There's a note here, 7, the wetlands were flagged on September 13th of '04, and the wetland line was approved, and Note 9 was approved by the commission, January 13th of 2009. And that was the line we used for the order of conditions that was issued then. Once this is issued, it's good for three years. But with the Permit Extension Act, which I can explain to if you aren't familiar with it, you would add four years. Well, you would take this and add three years plus another four. So the wetland line you see here is good till 2016.
Okay, so my question, first question is, do we have this approval? Because I don't remember seeing this anywhere.
No. The plan that was... the order of conditions that was issued January 13th, 2009, which Paul was just talking about, has some conditions that say that, you know, that were added at the end that says no disruption or filling of wetlands is allowed. And then it says, "A new plan shall be prepared by the applicant showing access to the building site without disruption of the bordering vegetated wetland." Now, we did talk to Conservation. They did not have any subsequent plan in their files.
Okay. We have that plan, but they don't have it yet, and let me explain why.
So they don't have it yet?
They don't have it yet.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
For your favor. The Smalls had to grant them an easement over their property so we could go around it. And it took the state a while to get that, because Mrs. Small was ill, and I think she passed away. The Saunders are gonna... what they're gonna do is to give them parcel eight for a dollar, and in return, they agreed to give them the easement. I have it on the plan, and we had a... We went to executive session, and we worked out an agreement where, rather than go to Superior Court, what we did was, we got the easement from the Smalls, and we showed the driveway going around. And what that order of condition says, if you read it carefully, is that we can't cross the wetland. That's a condition of approval, and we have to give them the plan showing that we're gonna go around that. We have the plan because we now have the easement. And part of the easement agreement is that this plan be approved, so this parcel can go to them. Then they're gonna release the easement back to Saunders. Then we're gonna give that plan to the commission showing that we're going around it. Otherwise, they cannot build that here. That was agreeing... I mean, it took three years to work that agreement out with the commission because there's a change in membership and was under appeal as well.
I think there's not necessarily any, like, real serious problem here. I think that there should be access that you all can really, you know, take to the bank.
Yeah, I just wanna see the paperwork.
So I think you...
I think I see two things, right? I see this lot, which you say you've sort of saw the access. Well, we don't see that here, right? And I see this lot here that doesn't look like it has any access.
Lot 6.
Yeah, Lot 6 looks like it's completely cut off.
Complete landlocked or wetland?
From its frontage.
From Clapp Road.
From Clapp Road.
No, this is 6 right here.
Yeah.
That's the frontage for 6.
And here's the wetlands, right here.
Yeah.
How are you gonna cross the wetlands?
How are you gonna get across the wetlands?
For what?
It's not for access to the buildable lot.
If they wanna cross a wetland, they would have to get approval from the Conservation Commission.
Right, but there's no apparent way to do that right now.
Because no one's applied for it. But again, that really has nothing to do with the division of the land for the plan as far as the responsibility of the board to sign the plan that shows the division of land.
I don't agree with that, Paul, and the reason I say is because I think... Let me finish. We listen to you. You get a turn. I think the frontage is illusion. And the reason I say that is because, you know, there's land there right there, but it's not useful. It wouldn't be any different than if there was a river, you know, going across there next to it, and you haven't owned both sides of it. You can't cross that.
It has to be practical access.
Effectively, the frontage is here before it becomes useful.
Why can't you cross it? You can cross it subject to a permit from the Conservation Commission.
Then I would buy off on it.
The practical aspect is, if you cross this, then you have to replicate the...
And like I said, if... No, let me finish. As soon as I see the Conservation Commission plan that's been approved, I'll say yes, probably. But until I see that, that is not, in my mind, what I'm gonna call real frontage. It's an illusion.
You're making the assumption someone's gonna build on the lot.
Why else would you divide it?
They don't, because they wanna keep this to a minimum. They could always join this with this property someday in the future.
Then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But right now, you know, we could talk about this lot, but you're trying to do both of them. And what we're saying is that, in terms of Lot 7, we understand that there is a plan which has been endorsed by the adjoining property owner and by the Conservation Commission. And I think what we've said informally at this point...
The Conservation Commission hasn't... doesn't have a plan.
Well, what they've said is that you can do it as long as you go around the wetlands, right?
Yes.
That's what I'm told. I haven't seen anything.
We haven't seen it. That's what I'm saying. We haven't seen it in this paperwork. I haven't seen anything from the adjoining property owners that say, "Yes, there's an easement." I haven't seen anything from the Conservation Commission that says, "Yes, you could do with an easement." And at this point, the only way across is through the wetlands, which again, in my mind, is an illusionary... is illusionary frontage. It doesn't exist.
First of all, this is the street frontage here. This is your upland in here. You've also got upland down in here, okay?
You can't build a house or build anything.
Can't do anything with it.
You wouldn't have to build a house there.
Like I said, there's no point in dividing the property.
Well, I... My understanding, and I could be wrong, is that I think the... this board, though, looks at... It doesn't necessarily have to be a buildable lot for us to subdivide it, correct?
Well, not really, Richard, because...
Because I thought we've done that before.
Well, we've done all kinds of things.
Still has to have a look at practical access.
Do you get that A and R handbook excerpt? I mean, I know nobody, you know, can get on top of all this stuff, but this A and R handbook is put out by the state, and they talk about the two different items to look at, being the frontage and access to the buildable portion of the lot.
Correct. And that's our obligation? Okay.
If it were me, I'd say, "Let's look at this another day." And in between now and then, I wanna see the evidence of the easement. I wanna see the evidence that you can go around with the easement. I wanna see something that convinces me that the Conservation Commission will... I wanna see something that convinces me that the Conservation Commission will allow you to cross to, to Lot 6. Or something that says that, you know, that defines that frontage, that, that, that any space is frontage as opposed...
Could get an easement.
Or an easement around, that'd be fine, yeah. You know, but, but, you know, this, this is still lowland. I mean, I, I used to live sort of like right here. And, and I remember going past here, I mean, the contour lines going down right through here are pretty steep. You know, it goes down a ways. And I can just imagine how marshy that is at the bottom and it's, you know, that's just my, my, my impression.
I guess where I'm confused is, and I've been doing this for forty-two years. I, I clearly know the subdivision control law. This is the plan for the division of land. When you divide land, it doesn't mean a parcel has to be buildable. What it said, and you can't look at zoning when you divide a plan. That's very clear in the subdivision control statute, number two. The other thing is, your regulations state that we have to do the survey, we have to show the wetlands, and they have to be confirmed by the commi, by the commission, which they clearly have been. One of the first steps, and some boards will require to have the lot approved before they'll let you apply for a permit. Okay? So, what I'm suggesting is, is that where this is the plan simply to divide the land, the applicant's entitled to have it endorsed because the statute says that. As far as getting all the other permits necessary to build, that's their risk. They, you know, they have to get the septic system approved from the board of health. They have to get the Conservation Commission to approve any work within a hundred feet of the wetland, including a crossing. Now, the commission, for whatever reason, doesn't allow you to fill wetlands. Okay?
And, and what I'm saying is that because your frontage borders wetland that's at this point uncrossable, I'm not convinced it's true frontage.
I don't believe that gives the board the right to deny the property owner to have the lot lines...
And what I'm asking for...
Divided off.
What, what, what I'm asking for is I'm asking you to come in and convince me that I can do that. Because I don't think I can. Okay? And I'm saying, you, you know, help me here, because you're the professional. I'm just a volunteer board member, okay? And, 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 and I'm asking you to help me do my job. And if, and if you can show me that I have the authority to do what you're asking to do, then we'll probably do that. But I don't think that I can agree to let you call uncrossable land frontage, because it's, it's not. You know, the, you know, the purpose of frontage is to provide access to that main road. And right now, there isn't any.
But you're coming from the point of view that you think this is a buildable lot.
No, I'm not. I'm saying that, you know, frontage, the only reason we'd have frontage as, as part of the regulation is so that there's access. Otherwise, otherwise it's an illusion.
Access for what?
Anything. And right now, I'm saying that because that wetland is there, there's no access to the frontage.
The frontage?
Yeah.
The frontage, what are you calling frontage?
I'm ca, I'm calling that, that, that part of the, that part of the, that part of the proposed lot that borders the main road, it's frontage.
Under, under the zoning bylaw, the frontage is that line right there. That's your lot frontage.
And what I'm saying is because that frontage adjoins wetland, it's not real.
Okay, again, what you're doing is to divide land. When you divide land, it doesn't mean it's a buildable lot.
I understand that.
Let me just give you an example. If I was gonna take a five-square-foot parcel out of here and add it to here, you would have to sign the plan because even if it's wetland, because it's a division of land. If I came down here, and let's say I took this piece here and I conveyed it to them, you would have to sign the plan because you just take off a small triangle piece of land. That's called a division of land, which you see here is a division of land.
I, I don't know if I'd have to do that, because I don't know if you'd have enough frontage.
What, what Paul is saying is, is true, but this is a completely different, as I see it, this is a completely different type of situation.
No, it's not.
Well, okay, we, you know.
We'll have to disagree.
You know what? Let me ask you a question. The lot frontage is a hundred feet, right? And you've got two-hundred-and-seventy-six feet. If I came in, if I took Lot 6 and split that into three, what's that, three eighty-foot, three, three ninety-foot lots?
Okay.
If I came in for the ninety, you know, ninety, 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 I don't have the required frontage for a buildable lot. Would you sign that plan if this was split up into three ninety-foot lots that don't need zoning?
No.
No.
Why?
Because it has no access. It has no frontage. It's still completely cut off, by the way.
If it's ninety feet of frontage, you can't, it's not a buildable lot. Because a buildable lot has to have a hundred feet of frontage and a hundred feet of lot width from the street back to the house. So, if I took three ninety-foot strips and went all the way back...
Is that what you're gonna do?
I can do that.
Are you gonna do that?
I'll do it if you'll sign the plan.
Well, this plan doesn't have that.
Yeah, that's the thing. I, I, I just don't...
It's currently a buildable lot, because it's got a hundred feet.
It isn't buildable. You know why it's not buildable? First of all, it hasn't been approved by the board. And even if it is approved by the board, I, I still need to get approval for a septic system and I need approval from Conservation.
I understand that.
I could get the septic system approved. I, I could get the lot approved. The Conservation could say no. That's the end of it. In, in Massachusetts, to get a building permit, you typically need three or four permits to build a house. This, this is only one step.
I, I, I understand that. But what I'm saying, you know, and, and maybe, maybe I'm confused. It, it's the idea that Lot 6 has to have frontage along Thomas Clap Road.
Which it does.
No, it, it doesn't. It's an illusion.
Well, it needs usable practical access from the frontage into the buildable part of the lot.
You can't get the frontage, you, you can't get across the frontage.
You know, there's case law on that.
You know what the Weatherless Protection Act says? And they, they changed this in eighty-four and they did it for a reason. They say if the only access to your upland is by crossing a wetland, the, the state and the commission has to let you cross a wetland. Otherwise, that's considered a confiscatory taking. Okay? What they say in there is that the commission may require you, and they always do, to replicate the wetland that you fill. But the reason they put that statement in there was because to deny a property owner, they have the ability to go to the commission and cross that wetland and be a confiscatory taking of their land without any compensation. And what I'm saying here, I think if the board were to say no to this lot, the way it is, you're, in my opinion, you're doing the same thing. You're not giving the property owner the ability to build a house back in this large upland area by coming over the upland area in the front and crossing a wetland at the narrowest point, which is what you do, to go up in here. Now, when we were doing this, this project here, we crossed about four-hundred feet of wetland. And the agent said we can't cross. Down the street around the corner, they were building five two-family homes. They filled quite a bit of wetland for a crossing. And I, and I argued with the commission. I said, how can you allow them to cross a wetland? To build five, now, if they're five houses or five two-families, and you won't let us cross it? And you know what they told us?
There were circumstances.
But no, but what they told us was, they're going to give the town twenty acres of land or whatever.
Yeah, it was like more like...
I said, so you're saying that if I give you the land here, you're gonna let me cross the wetland?
It, it's all a matter of degree. I mean, they, there, there was a big land gift connected with that, so...
It, it, it may be, but, so what we're, what I'm thinking is that, once, once I'm convinced that you have a way from the frontage back to the upland, we'll talk.
Okay, we only have that way once we get approval from the commission. But as far as the division of the plan, okay, that's, to me, is very clear in the statute. And I think we're agreed with that. If it's a division of land, if you read the section statute, it said if it is a subdivision and it's a division of land, the, the board shall forthwith endorse the plan.
There, there's nothing saying that you have to endorse the plan before the Conservation Commission gives, you know, gives their approval. In fact, there's a lot saying that you should not do that.
And that's what, that's what we're saying. We wanna see action from the Conservation Commission.
Well, they are gonna, they, they spent a lot of money to get to this point. What, what they did originally, we, we...
When you say "they," who's "they"?
Well, the estate.
Okay.
I mean, the estate has to do something with it for tax purposes. We, we had a common driveway coming down here. We're gonna work with these people. The father died and I guess the two sons couldn't agree, so we had to withdraw that. But we had a common driveway coming down here, a lot for a house here and a house here. They, and, and now they can't do it. But the estate has to, you know, they're, they're being forced to do this. But let me go back and ask you the question again. I come back to you with three ninety-foot lots, so you don't have the hundred feet of frontage or the lot width?
I, I, I don't wanna deal with hypotheticals.
No, no, it is a hypothetical.
I wanna look at what is.
I'll come back with a plan showing we got non-buildable lots in here. Would, would you sign that?
And you come back to that?
Will I?
Because, you know, you're, you're gonna have to convince me that you can do the frontage, that you have to, you have to convince me that the frontage is real frontage and not a moat.
No, what I'm saying there is, if I come in with a ninety-foot lot, it's the same scenario as carving off a triangle and getting a twenty-inch area. It isn't a buildable parcel. And those ninety-foot strips would not be buildable.
That's, that's, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying you have to have fifty feet, in this case, you've got about four times that, of real frontage. And by real frontage, I mean it means you can cross, because at this point, what you got here is a moat. Okay? You got, and, and, and a moat is, you know, it's to prevent you from getting from one point to the next. You know, you can't get to the frontage from the rest of the spot. So, you gotta convince me somehow or another that this frontage here is really useful as frontage. It's not. Now, if you, if you...
Frontage or access?
In my mind, it's the same thing. Now, you, you may, you may convince me that you found a way around the frontage through here or something like that. Uh, you know, that you might convince me, but at this point, there's no way to get from Thomas Clap Road to what you identify as the center of Lot 6.
There is, as long as you, as long as you get approval from Conservation.
Go get it.
But what, but what you're saying is, you're doing the reverse. You're saying...
Yeah, I'm saying I'm not...
You're saying get approval from Conservation.
Exactly right.
Okay?
Demonstrate that you have practical access to the upland portion of the lot.
What if I did this? What if I, what if I got a letter from the commission saying that we would grant you access to this parcel as, as long as the commission approved the crossing?
I, I will assume that for the purposes of discussion, that what you're talking about is if you get a letter from the commission that says, we'll let you cross, and you're gonna replicate the wetland somewhere else, you know, then at that point, we'll talk about it.
Because here's where I'm gonna, if I had to go to the commission for my client and do an actual application to cross that wetland, she's probably gonna get ten to fifteen thousand dollars, just for the purpose of proving to the board that she can cross here. And it doesn't mean she wants to sell this.
And, and, and like you just said a minute, a minute ago, is, is that if, if this is real frontage, for lack of a better word, and all we're doing is having a division of land, then we have to approve it. And once you convince me that that's real frontage, and because it's just a division of land, it's, it's a done deal. Right?
To me, that's clearly real frontage.
And I'm saying it's not. I, I'm saying, once, once you convince me, once you convince me that this is not an impassable moat. Okay? And that means that you have a, a letter from the, the Conservation Commission that says you can do this, this, and this, then at that point, all it is, is a division of, a division of real property. And you've got a real, real frontage without an impassable, then, then, then it's a done deal. Right? So, it, so the point is, is that your client isn't losing anything. If, if, if she's, if she's really serious about this by making the investment, because she's gonna get what she's after. No sweat.
She's not after this. She's, what, what they wanna do is, they, they've got their three thousands here.
Uh-huh.
And they're gonna give this parcel to the Smalls, and then Lot 7, they wanna put that on the market to sell the house.
Then, then what we wanna do is you want...
This is the remaining land.
What we wanna do is withdraw this, and you wanna focus just on this one, and I wanna see the paperwork related to that.
All right, I will get you the, the paper. You mean the order of conditions from the commission?
I, I wanna see, I wanna be convinced that you can get from Summer Street to the center of Lot 7.
We got an order of conditions. It tells us we can.
I don't see the easement across parcel eight.
No, you don't.
No, it's, it's, it doesn't say that, though. It says that it, it's not gonna approve it until there's another plan.
What I have to do is to give them the plan showing that, okay?
All right.
All right, I'll do that. But, you know, in retrospect, what I'm having a hard time with is that knowing what the subdivision control law says, is why do we have to convince the planning board that they should endorse a plan?
Paul? I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, and I apologize, but I wanna answer your question. If you were here a little earlier, you heard me talk to the, the people about the stormwater permit. And the reason is, you guys are the ones asking for, for the benefit from us. And, and so I think that being the case, you all have to assume all of the risk. The neighbors aren't going to assume any. We're not going to assume any. And so you have to convince me that, that, that I am not gonna get into trouble by doing this. Okay?
You wouldn't get in trouble if you approved this lot?
I don't know that.
How would you get in trouble? Wow.
That's, that's the thing. I don't know that.
How would you get into trouble if you approved that lot?
I don't know that. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just telling...
I do.
And, and what I'm telling you is, you have to convince me.
You know why? I know, I know, I know the subdivision control law very well, and this is a division of land.
But it's not just the subdivision control law, and I'm sure Paul will agree. It's also a whole backlog of case law, which explains and...
It's pretty clear that the case law explains that it needs to be practical access to the upland part of the lot, right? So, I mean, it's, um, that's really, I think, what Eric's asking here is, what's demonstrate that.
So, so what you're saying in a case like this is, if this property owner went to the commission and they got an approval for a crossing, then, then you would sign the plan?
That's basically what it boils down to, yeah.
Because it's practical access.
You know, as, as long as you can convince me that, you know, at some point in time, I can drive my car from Thomas Clap Road...
On the town's fire truck.
Yeah, or any of that stuff to here, done deal.
Okay, that's a new one on me.
We can give you a copy of the A and R handbook.
What else has come back, and I'll, I'll, um, what I recommend to them is that... So, let me just be clear again. If I come in and split this up into non-buildable lots, you wouldn't sign it?
No.
Can I ask first of all...
Why don't you wait and see what it, Paul, brings in a lot showing a buildable lot?
Let's see what Paul's gonna do.
Showing a buildable lot or doesn't, or what, what he does.
If I were to combine this before, you'd sign it?
I might. I might have to.
Combine it before, you have, you have frontage, right?
I might have to.
It would be one lot, right?
Because you got a house on it.
Right.
Yeah.
So, it'd be, but it would be one lot. It would have frontage from here...
Right.
All the way around to...
Yeah, but I mean, what you do in there, this, that, that's one of the options.
It'd be one single lot.
All right, I'm gonna need time to get this back to the commission, because the agent's out, I think, before he's...
So, do we need to withdraw, or do we need to...
Yeah, you can't continue, so...
I think we need to withdraw.
You cannot, legally, you can't do it.
You can't continue with the...
No, because it's a twenty-one-day time clock.
Statutory clock, right?
Yeah, so, what I was just gonna do for you was to write a letter asking the planning board to, you know, allow you to withdraw the application.
To withdraw the project.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then...
Is, is there a fee that he has to pay?
Well, he, he paid a fee, but we can...
I, I, that's what I'm asking, is if we can waive the fee next time around. Because I, you know, I don't wanna stand in the way of this. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we're doing this right the first time.
Doing our, our job.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I just had a question for Paul. I just don't understand, theoretically, I'm just trying to like understand this completely. Why would you theoretically do the ninety, the three lots that are not buildable? Are you saying you just want that because then you want, you're really wanting... What I'm trying to figure out is, you really want Lot 7 approved. So, therefore, you're dividing Lot 6 into three non-buildable lots?
You know why I did that? Because the planning board did exactly what I just recommended about eight or nine years ago on Cedar Street. There was a parcel that had two-hundred-and-forty feet of land. We had, we had wetlands. Actually, we didn't have this much wetland, I mean, this much upland in the front. What I did was, I broke it up into three eighty-foot lots. We brought it back and they signed it. Eleanor Foley was the chairman then, and I said, what's your concern then? Someone's gonna build a house there? She said, yes. I said, well, what if we break it into three non-buildable lots? She said, fine. Changed her mind. I brought it back and they signed it. That's why I suggested you do that, because it'd be consistent with what they did before.
I, I think they were wrong. I think they were wrong.
Yeah, I think Eleanor didn't have a lot of experience with it.
No, even so, I, I think, I think they were wrong.
Okay, but that wasn't, I, I guess, kind of my question. But my, is, is that because you're really trying, you're really concerned about Lot 7? That's all you really care about? And like, you're dividing this Lot 6 just to get it approved? Like, why would you build, why would you do three non-buildable lots?
It could be A and R plan sign, so the estate can sell this off and the estate would still retain this.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Okay.
Except for from their individual house.
Okay, got it.
Otherwise, you have to combine it with Lot Four.
Right. Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to understand it.
I mean, these, they don't want this to be part of the estate, but this would be leftover land. They don't need this for Lot Seven.
I got it, yeah.
This is all approved to go, you know, so when you give the plan back, so this is leftover land, and we're on it alone. If someday in the future, these people were to come together, then we'd come back with this.
I, okay. So-
But for quarters of, this is for the estate purposes.
I understand that. So, what are, I know you're withdrawing, but the idea is that if they got a letter? I mean, I'm just concerned that there's, that he would have to spend, or that the estate would have to spend fifteen or twenty thousand dollars.
Well, I hope not.
The estate doesn't have the money to do that.
Okay, but the, you know, the way I understand it, and granted, I'm, you know, somewhere on the long and steep learning curve, is that frontage means you've got to be able to get from the street to where you're going to be.
I-
If it's going to be a buildable lot.
I think, yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand. What is the ultimate goal here? So what I'm hearing is the ultimate goal is this estate, they want to really sell this. That's really what the ultimate goal is, is to Lot Seven, and there seems to be an agreement there.
Well, the long-term goal is they want to develop Lot Six, too.
Well, is it? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, they just said if they got an easement here, they would-
They've already got plans, they've shown a clear intention to develop that lot, that lot, too.
Well, okay, that's kind of where I was trying to figure out what was going on. So, if we had a letter and not actually a permit, is that acceptable? I'm just trying to understand where we're at right here.
I've just got to be convinced that that's not an impassable moat, you know, that's for me personally.
Right, so that could be a letter from Conservation.
A letter, a plan.
You can wait and see what Paul brings in. I mean, you don't have to try to second guess, because you-
I mean, as far as that goes, Paul could, you know, put a helipad up there, too.
You know what your other option is? Have a common driveway coming in here?
You know, we talked about that, and that's a possibility, too.
Yep.
So, I'd have to write you a letter and ask you if you'd approve a common driveway to come in here?
You might have to, you might have to come in with a common driveway application, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, like I said, wanted to make sure I understood it, and I think I do.
I think that would actually be a pretty elegant solution to that, would be to do the common driveway through Lot Four.
And I'm going to say something really probably stupid, but I'll say it anyway. Like, when you actually have this condition, I mean, can you put a bridge? I know that'd be, like, very expensive, but like, a, you know, a wooden bridge over this?
I, you probably could.
Yeah, it becomes whether that's really a practical-
That's what I'm asking. I don't know if that's-
There's actually some case law on that.
The bridge is about two thousand dollars a foot to build usually, but that's one of the alternative analysis that you would do.
It would still impact the wetlands. Still need a Conservation Commission approval.
Your state never intended to come across this wetland because of the cost? Okay, because if we had two lots in here, this is all perked. The reason for the common driveway was to, was to avoid crossing.
Yeah, I get that. That makes sense. But that, like you said, that's off the table now, though, because it's that-
I mean, the cost to cross that would be-
Enormous.
Okay. That's, I was just asking if that was in the possibility.
To the point where the lot isn't worth much.
Okay.
Right.
All right. All right, thank you. I just wanted to really fully understand.
No, no, and kind of piggybacking on what Richard said, if your initial intent was to separate this from the rest of the estate so that that could be sold, and this is, call it leftover land, and you're looking at it saying, we know we can't get here, we have approval for a septic system, and we have this upland area that is a buildable lot, but we know we can never get through here. We just want to keep it separate from the kids' houses, keep it separate so we can sell Lot Seven. Then in the future, if we ever did want to develop it, you'd have to address not being able to cross this or come back with the neighbors for a common driveway. But your intent was to just divide the land so that, you know, I know we have our issues up here that you apparently have letters, and we can address this so you can get Lot Seven on the market.
Well, the plan we had, and we're all ready to submit it to you for the common driveway, we came down here and go in here. Then the father died, the two brothers fought, and they said, no. So we had to stop. And again, the only reason was, I know we can get a permit to cross the wetland because of what the Wetlands Act says. The problem is, is the cost to do that. And the lots are only worth so much. You know, if a lot is worth a hundred thousand, that's going to cost you a hundred thousand to cross it. It isn't worth it.
But that's what I mean, you just kind of wanted to separate this. It is Lot Six, but you knew that you have other hurdles that you have to cross to even start to develop this.
You have hurdles for any lot you want to-
Oh, I agree, but you just wanted to, you wanted to divide the land so that you could get rid of Lot Seven, sell that off. They could keep their property, and this would just sit there.
Because Seven had the upland requirement for a house lot, forty thousand.
But he could also divide off that Lot Six at any time.
Okay, all right. And that's where, but again, there'd be hurdles involved with that as far as access, and, okay, all right.
This is the first hurdle, and this is, I think we had a workable solution here if you're willing to to withdraw and come back.
Now, is that center lot that's on Summer Street there, is that improved, or is that just vacant? The one that it's fingers on?
No, no, this, this is a brother's house, and this is her house.
But they are houses there, they're just not shown on this plan.
Yeah, Lot Six used to be from here over. This was cut off back in about ten years ago.
Yeah, I remember when I first-
It would still be an elegant solution.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a very elegant solution, is the common driveway through there, and, you know, if these truly are siblings, it shouldn't be a big deal.
That's what I can agree on.
Didn't work for these guys.
But I remember my first move to town, driving through that corner and thinking, who in the heck was this guy, Itchy?
He used to have a little stand out there. He used to sell newspapers.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Then there's the guy around the corner that has his body shop there. I just, it's the most amazing place, you know?
Ray, Ray, let's hear it.
Where are we here?
Okay, so here's your letter, and all you have to do is sign it. And here's, this is our denial motion, which we didn't need to do that, but this was the one for the-
Okay. Want to hand that down to Richard, the motion reader?
All right, can I put it in here for without prejudice?
Sure.
Sure. Read the handwritten part.
So, I move to accept the applicant's request to withdraw the application for a Form A plan for the estate of Elise Cohen dated February twenty-six, two thousand thirteen.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Paul.
I wonder if you want to have a beer sometime?
I'd like that. Does that make mine a root beer?
Do you drink old root beers?
Okay. All right. I think we're to the-
What do we have left?
To the last few things. We have county and approval minutes, liaison reports, and town planner. You have bills to sign?
Yeah, we do. We have... Oh, here, there's a motion. There are a bunch of bills.
You mean a motion for the bills?
Ah, tonight we do.
Make it easy for you, Richard.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I'm always, like, looking like, oh. I move to approve the requisition of six hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-five cents to Armory Engineers PC for professional engineering services for Five Forty-three Country Way. For four hundred and fifty dollars to Armory Engineers PC for professional engineering services for Two Fourteen Clapp Road. And six hundred and sixty dollars to Armory Engineers PC for professional engineering services for Sixty-One Border Street. And for one thousand five hundred and nine dollars to Murphy Hess, Toomey, and Lehane. Limited, was it, limited legal partnership? Is that LLP?
LLP, is that what it is?
Yeah. For legal services for Deer Common. For one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents to Chesia Consulting Services for peer review for Three Oh Five Country Way. Three thousand and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for peer review for Three Oh Five Country Way. And for four hundred and ten dollars to Gatehouse Media for legal ads in the Situate Mariner for Seventy-Five Moreland Road, Greenfield Estates, and the Scenic Road hearing for Three Oh Five Country Way.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes.
We've got June thirteenth and June twenty-seventh. Somebody has to make a motion.
Just make a motion to accept those.
Okay, so we're talking about the minutes of June thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and June twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen.
And Karen, you did make those corrections to the twenty-seventh, okay?
We have a motion to accept.
Second?
Do we have a motion first?
Oh, a motion to accept the minutes?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Liaison reports. Anybody?
We haven't been liazzoning?
No. I have nothing new to report with respect to the medical marijuana issue, but I do have some questions.
Okay.
All right.
Question number one, I guess, would be addressed to Laura. When do we need to have this new bylaw in place, ready to be voted on at town meeting?
We have a-
Is it the fall or the spring?
We should be starting to work on it now.
That's what I'm asking.
You know, in the fall, we'll start, you know, maybe have a workshop, and then we can start thinking about advertising and so on.
So it's in the spring?
So we're going to expect to vote on it in the spring? We need to start backward planning as to how much time we've got to get together.
Yeah, we do have a whole list of all the time, the time deadlines, but I don't have it with me. But my gut sense is that we should be working on it.
All right. I would like to have some sort of input from... Glad that Richard's back, because he volunteered to help me with this. I'd like to have some input from the other agencies in town that would be responsible. As I read through the regulations, the Health Department has an integral part of this. I would think that we would want to maybe have some... I'd like to get a sense as to whether or not any business people are actually planning to do this, and I don't know quite how to find that out. But I'd like to find out if there is going to be likely a proposal to come forward asking for a permit. I think the police would certainly be interested in coming in to participate.
School, maybe.
The school, there was another, other things. I'd like to have some input if we had a deputation from the local medical community as well. I know that there were some issues with respect to traffic. That when the product, for lack of a better word, was grown, manufactured, and transported, there were some issues about being in a safe and secure fashion. You know, there were some issues with respect to security. And then the regulation talks about, further about business plans and whether or not the companies were adequately capitalized, you know, and those kinds of things. Yeah, those are all state regulations. Those are all state regulations, but I'm thinking there's, I don't know whether it would be appropriate or whether there's a mechanism to put that into our approval process and say, we'd like to see your business plan. And we'd like to see, you know, who your backers are and those kinds of things. Because this is an extraordinary thing they're asking for. I'm not necessarily trying to frighten them away, but one of the things that evidently my research indicates is that when people begin these enterprises, the town or the governmental entities have kind of a strong interest in making sure they succeed. Because evidently, it's bad when they first start out and then fail. And evidently, the experience in Colorado is that there's been a failure rate of like eighty percent or something like that.
And when you say bad, what bad happens when they, other than obviously the business failure?
The business failure, but also it's-
Collateral damage?
Yeah, I don't quite understand, yeah, I don't quite understand it, but, you know, if we're going to have people essentially peddling controlled substances, we want to make sure they, number one, know what they're doing, and they're going to do it in a responsible and measured way. And number three, they're going to be successful, because we don't want them to start on this and then fail, because who knows what's going to happen when things begin to spiral out of control.
One thing I may be able to fill in on how this works is that it's really interesting the way the state has it set up. They're going to have like a open season for applications. They're going to have some kind of application period. And then everybody across the state that's interested in starting up one of these has to get their application in during, you know, this period. Then they pick the ones that are capitalized appropriately. They are going to look at whether they have local support. They're going to look at a whole bunch of factors.
What does having local support mean?
That's a good question.
It's sort of a circular argument if part of local support is we want to know they're well-capitalized and, you know, the things that the state wants to know as well, right?
I'll tell you the one thing that-
Ones where, you know, I think there have been some cities and towns that are really interested in, you know, they're so desperate for business that they're very happy to have one of these things come and start it up.
And the thing, the documentary that I saw that was very interesting is these things are cash flow machines to the extent that they, you know, and it's all cash business. And so from the standpoint of our ability or our interest in building our commercial tax base, if these things run and run well, as I recall, the one dispensary that I saw in the documentary in the Bay Area in San Francisco, like seventy thousand dollars a day in cash. And so that's, you know, that's something we ought to look at is-
How does that translate into, like, economy for the town, per se? I mean, because it's not really taxed at a local level.
There's certainly property tax, but I'm beginning to wonder, and that's something I want to find out, because of the additional services that these kinds of business operations would need, whether or not we could charge a fee over and above, over and above what the normal tax rate would be. Because they're going to be prone to, you know-
Negotiate a pilot?
Yeah, people ripping them off and things like that. You know, they have to transport the product in and out of town on our roads. We want to make sure that that's done safely. And so I would think that, for instance, they might want some additional police protection. And one of the things we want to talk about is, you know, if we're going to have that, there's a cost to that. And whether or not they would be willing to assume that, and whether or not we can even assess that legally. I don't know.
We might be able to do a payment in lieu of taxes.
Exactly right, yeah. So those are the things.
Interesting question, yeah.
And then there was one other thing that I, so there's the, oh. There are evidently a couple of law firms that have come into the state recently, one from Colorado that focused strictly on medical marijuana. And if we asked them, they'd probably come and participate and pitch. So I'd like to find out what they think and know. And so if we could get some sort of joint workshop together, maybe for the, well, fall's almost upon us.
Yeah, September, say. Would the board be interested in having it as part of one of your meetings, or do you want to do it separately?
It's likely to be long.
It's likely to be long.
Yeah, I think when we did this before, I think we did it separately.
It was a separate one. It was over at Pier Forty-four.
Yeah, so we could do that again. But I think it would be good if we had, you know, some alternatives to talk with people about.
I would think we'd also want to have the EDC come participate, because this is right up there, and the Board of Selectmen may want to send a deputation as well.
Can I ask, what is our responsibility in this particular case? I mean, is it just to say, kind of, this is where we feel the zoning, you know, or the area? Or is it actually setting up the, like, what you're discussing is more of the actual logistics of how you would set up a center?
Well, I think it's twofold.
Well, maybe the zoning is driven by the logistics.
Mainly, mainly we're interested in the zoning issue, okay? But the other issue we need to decide is whether or not we, as a community, want to advocate for one of these in our town simply because of the income that it will bring.
Right.
And, you know-
But I guess I was trying to understand, like, our responsibility as a board. So, for instance, let's just say that we, you know, we zone Three A for something crazy that's going to be available for medical marijuana dispensaries. Can we also then, at the same time, say that there will be a fee in lieu of taxes? Can we also then, at the same time, say that there will be a fee in lieu of taxes? Or, I mean, is that our jurisdiction, or I'm just asking?
I wanna find out, I don't know.
You're gonna wanna discuss with the selectmen and other people. But I think your responsibility is to draft the zoning. And the zoning doesn't have to cover every single aspect of this. Because for one thing, the state regulations are so comprehensive.
Yeah, we shouldn't duplicate the state regulations.
They really cover, they cover a lot of the security issues. They cover the capitalization issues. Who can be on the Board of Directors. It has to be run by a nonprofit. I mean, there are a lot of areas that they regulate.
But I think our approach should be coherent. You know, that so that all the agencies in town that have jurisdiction over this issue, everybody's working in the right direction towards a common purpose. And for one thing, I'd like to get a sense of, are we interested in this or are we not? Because at some point, if we just say, for instance, if we are interested in it, and then we get all these actors into our workshop kind of a thing, we basically then say, this is gonna look a lot like a request for proposal. You know, if you meet our requirements, we'll greenlight your project. And if it's attractive enough to our town, strictly in terms of business development, then I think we ought to pitch it. But again, I think we need to make sure it works right the first time, and it's something we really wanna have.
Well, remember, though, that when we had--
Yeah. Organization, try to get the information out. But at the end of the day, the planning board can really only address the zoning issue at this point, right?
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that we can't act as the convener to--
I think we can act as part of our overall planning function for the town as well.
But you did have a workshop back before the moratorium, right when you were thinking about the moratorium. And there were people there from the schools. I think the school superintendent was there. There were people from, I think the police chief was there. At least one selectman was there. And then there were some people from the health community. And I think there were a few people that were interested in finding, you know, where there was gonna be one of these dispensaries. But I think the overall feeling from that meeting was that people were really concerned about kids and their access to something like this. And that, you know, they wanted to be very protective of the young people. So I think that's what I got from that meeting.
Having kids in the high school, I don't think it's gonna become any more accessible than it already is. And my next thought would be whether or not the people from the state that are responsible for regulating, whether they would come.
I can ask. I mean, there are a few of them, and there are a lot of us, so a lot of towns, so I don't know.
And I'm gonna guess that somebody out there's got a draft set of bylaws that we could plagiarize.
Well, I think the other thing is that every town is so different. I mean, we've got our commercial zone, which seems like it would be a fairly reasonable place for it. But other towns, like Norwell approved it because they have an industrial park, which is very isolated. And they put it there, which is fine, because nobody goes in there and it's all, you know, very supervised there, or it can be. So every single town has a completely different situation, so it's hard to take somebody else's bylaw. But what I'm gonna suggest is, I'm gonna be away for about five days. I'll be back the 23rd of July. Maybe when I get back, the three of us can sit down and decide, do we wanna have a couple of options? Do we wanna try for, you know, one strong proposal? You know, let's put our heads together, decide what we wanna do.
Would EDC do a survey for us? I know they did that in the past, they've done some surveys. Would they do a survey for us to find out what the consensus is in the town about this?
Well, I was at their meeting last night, and they have just gone through this big turnover. They've got three new members, three old members. And I think they're pretty busy with the market study that they're doing. So I'm not sure if they could do that, but, yeah, we could ask them.
Well, that's an interesting thing, if they're doing a market study.
Yeah, they are doing a market study, so this might--
Why wouldn't this be a potential, you know, economic market, so to speak?
I watched the, I think I mentioned it last week, the Morgan Spurlock documentary on CNN. And my eyes were open, I mean, just, you know, you have the-- You know, you have the, sort of the stereotype of the typical head shop kinds of things that people see. These guys were not that.
Was it, I mean, ultimately, was it positive, negative, or was it just sort of--
It was very positive. You know, because they, you know, they talked about, you know, very sophisticated, very kind of segmented, for lack of a better word. There was product for, you know, it's not like you just went in and bought, you know, weed in a baggie and took it home. There were products for people with these kinds of problems. You know, they were, you know, we're used to hearing about brownies and so forth, and there were fruit products like that. But there were, you know, there were other kinds of things and other preparations, for lack of a better word. The people running these things were, you know, very professional business people. And, you know, the high security in the operations they had. And then they talked further about, you know, some of the people that were patients. And it becomes very clear that these are people that are in extreme suffering. And here is a product that provides them with some relief. And, you know, I'm not, I'm one of those people that believes that there's no glory in suffering. And if we can alleviate people's pain and stuff through a, you know, a fairly modest intervention, then we have an obligation to do so. And if it puts an enormous amount of coin in our community's pocket at the same time, then, you know, those are more schoolteachers. And more firefighters that we can hire, all those kinds of things.
Well, it sounds like we have, should develop the game plan then, and try to figure out how to move it forward.
So, I mean, I think that works well for me. I'm actually gone the next five days as well, or next week. So anytime after the 23rd, you know, maybe we can just have a separate meeting and the three of us get together. I don't know, after, after work, Laura. I don't know if that, or maybe during the day, that could possibly work.
That's fine. So I believe that one of the first questions we need to ask is, do we want to do this?
Right.
And then that will drive the rest of the decision-making process.
But even if we don't, we still have to come up with zoning.
We still have to do the zoning.
Because we can't, as we know, by law, we can't say, no, this is not gonna happen.
That's correct.
Well, actually, our zoning bylaw says there's a moratorium until the regulations are issued, which they are now.
Which they are. But the thing is, is if we decided that we weren't interested in pursuing this kind of a thing as a town, then we could probably go with a more cookie-cutter approach. If we decide that we are interested in doing this at town, then we're gonna wanna make a commitment to it.
Probably just level of effort you put into it, yeah.
Yeah, I think the other thing is that the moratorium is still in effect. I mean, until, I think it's next May.
It was one year.
So it's, we do have the opportunity to adopt zoning, and it's gonna mean something. So we're under the moratorium now, but that's, you know, the state made it very clear they wouldn't let you extend it. Like, next year, we can't pass a moratorium again, they won't--
Right, if I remember right, it was sort of conditioned on, it was a moratorium to a particular date. But it was also conditioned upon the regulations being issued, right, and finalized.
Well, what we tried to say was until zoning was adopted. And that's what the AG kicked out. They didn't let us keep that. So it's really until, I think it's May 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get together, that's a good--
And the last thought of this is that I don't wanna go to town meeting, propose a zoning bylaw on this issue and have it be voted down. I mean, I don't wanna see that happen. So I think we need to take as much time as we need to take, do something in a quality way, and then sell it to our citizens.
Well, and also be very clear that if we don't have anything, if you vote this down, whatever we come up with, you're basically telling that they could put it anywhere then.
Yes.
So I think that's pretty clear, if people understand that.
Yeah. Okay, good. Town planner report.
Oh, okay. Let's see. I'm kinda juggling a lot of different big projects that are kind of moving somewhere towards completion. And you may have heard about these before, but just to kind of keep everything rolling. The sea level rise project is, we were gonna try to have a final presentation to the selectmen on July 23rd, but there are a few glitches in the report. They're trying to show all the economic impact of sea level rise. And they have some very complicated software, which they couldn't really quite work all the butts out.
Too complicated, I am.
Yeah, so I think we're gonna try to do that presentation in September, in late September, when Rick Murray comes back. He's out on a research boat. But he should be back by then, because he was, you know, the one selectman who was really interested in this. And then the open space plan is this, you know, really nice kind of interesting plan about all the town's recreation and open space. And the Recreation Commission's very involved with it. The Conservation Commission's very involved with it. So we're working on that, and we have a consultant that's helping us on that. So that's, that's good. The EDC is working on their market study. And that involves a planner from MAPC who, some of the market study work is gonna be subcontracted. The EDC met last night, and they spent quite a bit of time talking with the MAPC planner about that. And they have three new members, but the only one who showed up was Anne Burbine. And it's, you know, such a good group that, you know, somebody new comes and they're sort of immediately part of the group. So I think, I think they're gonna spend a lot of their energy really working on that market study and getting that worked out. Although they've got ideas about so many aspects of the town's economy. They were talking about the importance of maybe garbage pickup as a way to get away from using the transfer station and then have the transfer station land available for development. I mean, there are, you know, a lot of connections they have that are just very interesting. And let's see, what else was I, oh. Sometime, hopefully before I leave, I'm working on a web blast that is gonna be a long one to explain, basically, what the changes are in the flood insurance maps. For anybody that lives anywhere near the coast, the flood zones are changing drastically. And the reason that I think this is happening is because FEMA is realizing that between climate change, all the storms that, you know, we're already seeing with the increased intensity and so on, that that flood insurance program has gotta really get serious about making sure they're self-supporting and that they're not gonna be, you know, having all these liabilities that they can't fund. So what's happening on the local level is pretty tough, because people's rates are really gonna start to go up. Some of the old grandfathering is going away, and they're increasing the flood elevation numbers. Where it used to be, it looked like there was a flood elevation of 11 feet, now it's going to 16 feet. I mean, there are changes like that that are really dramatic. And--
Who's doing it? FEMA's doing it.
FEMA's doing it. And the town can appeal it. And we'll have to, like, package an appeal based on all, you know, appeals from people throughout town. So this is kind of like a big, a big job. But it won't be just me doing it, it'll be, you know, coordinated through Tricia. And I'm sure the selectmen will have to decide, you know, that, yes, they wanna pursue this appeal. But someone's gonna, you know, write everything and pull everything together and so on, so.
So let me ask you a question. I'm thinking back to this conversation we had where we voted to have the selectmen appeal the decision to the SJC on that one parcel on Edward Foster.
Oh, yeah.
And the backdrop of that was about the flood line, right? It was about the, it was about kind of the flood zone. How the map that was used in the zoning, in the decision was a 1971 map or something like that.
Yeah.
And that that has never been amended or modified. And that that may actually be kind of still the fallback map here, as far as any zoning decisions go. So whatever FEMA's doing is still not affecting that particular piece, right? I mean, we sort of have this disconnect between what that particular map shows and what current-day technology actually shows.
Yeah, I'm not sure how far apart those two really are. But there are some places, I'm not sure how far apart they were over there, because that was in the FEMA V-zone, in the Velocity Zone, that property. But there are other places where there's land that, you know, should be in a flood protection district, and it's not. And there's probably others that go the other way, too.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
What I remember being is that the map, you know, was rough. It was described as sort of a rough, you know, sort of contour. And that FEMA was much more specific and encompassed that piece of land.
Yeah, that was part of it. We have a new filing on that case. And I think that the work they're doing on that case is really excellent.
Is it?
Yeah, so there's a kind of a fat filing that's maybe about 75 pages. And this one's only about, you know, 25 pages, but it's a response to--
Are those available electronically, or is that all?
I can see if I can get those electronically.
I'd like to see those, be interested in just the briefs and how it's going on, if you could.
Yeah. Okay, and that's about the substance of my report.
I did have, I thought I saw some email or something come through about the commercial for Riverway. What was the status on that? Wasn't there something that came through that you were, I don't know if that's even part of the market study or something, but--
The EDC talked about that last night. It probably will be covered in the market study in some way. But the commercial building at the front of that development, this is the condominium, it's called the Riverway on the Driftway. It's next to James Landing.
Oh, yes, okay, yep.
There's supposed to be a commercial building out front. I think it's only about 2,000 square foot footprint, with apartments up above. And the developer of that property said that he was going to spin that off and sell, you know, the rights to build that to someone. So I asked him for, you know, paperwork showing, you know, how is this all gonna fit, you know, with the, you know, the responsibilities for, there's a walkway to a cemetery, and then there are, you know, a lot of other things up there, the drainage system, all kinds of things. And I never heard back. So it's been kind of spotty, you know, the connection with him. So I'm not sure what's going on. But probably in another couple of months, I'll hear something else.
Yeah, I think there was an email or something that you'd sent out about that.
Yeah, I think I sent it, yeah.
Because last summer, remember, he came before the board and we, he actually wanted, or sort of asked us if we would, how to say, not rate an egg on that, the commercial building, but if we would waive that, and we all said no.
Right.
So, and then I remember him saying, well, with market conditions, it probably won't be till, you know, the summer of 2013. Here's the summer of 2013, so that's why I was just curious.
Yeah.
Was that where the Starbucks was going?
Yes, wouldn't that be wonderful? See, I keep having this eternal hope.
I think you should buy a franchise.
Well, they don't have franchises, I don't believe.
I don't know.
Okay.
Anyway.
Anything else? We need Bob's motion, and Bob's not here, so.
Well, we have one Bob.
Another Bob, an extra Bob.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Approved.
Aye.